We're going.
Second.
Claude was the second. We're moving into executive session pursuant to.
Pursuant to one MRS 4056A.
All right, done deal.
He good?
Good.
Evening, everyone. This is the last scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council for 2023. There are agendas available in the file pockets near the entrance or on the city of Waterville's website. All items appearing on the consent agenda are routine in nature and are voted on in one motion and vote. All items listed under unfinished business or new business are voted on separately. On any agenda item, all councils will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, and staff or citizens will be given an opportunity for questions or comments. Speakers must identify themselves at the podium. Each citizen will be allowed one opportunity to speak and will be limited to up to three minutes. Finally, councillors will be given another opportunity to speak or comment. Citizens that would like to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to do so during the public section, public comments section of the agenda. Pledge of allegiance. All right, disclosure of conflict of interest. Seeing none, I am going to move on to the city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, a reminder that the city has launched a notification system, and we're encouraging all residents to sign up. You can select sort of what notifications you're interested in receiving. The place to sign up is at waterville-me.myfreealerts.com. So that's waterville-me.myfreealerts.com. We had, especially during the storm, a lot of good information that was going out there. We actually had a fair amount of new subscribers during that time, so we're encouraging everyone to go ahead and sign up for the city alert system. Just an update on the unhoused population and a call for volunteers. As of last week, we currently have less than 10 individuals left out the Head and Falls encampment. Our public safety staff have been pretty diligent about going out and doing some one-on-one outreach, extending services and resources with the goal obvious of getting people inside during the winter weather. We're also continuing to put out the call for volunteers to be able to assist in staffing a city-run warming shelter. Our public safety departments are putting on trainings to train these volunteers to be able to staff these shelters whenever they become needed during severe weather events or other emergencies. If you are interested in volunteering, please contact either myself or Teresa Crawford at the fire department to get registered for the next class. We did have one on December 9th, which was a great success. Thank you to everyone for their participation there. And this is a one-time, it is about six hours, but it is a one-time training, and you're now, we'll say, certified to staff one of these shelters to help us through future emergencies. So we're encouraging anyone interested to please reach out to myself from the fire department for information there. Pine Ridge Trails reconstruction, I updated the council on this a few weeks ago. We need to construct about 4.5 miles of trails that were lost during the airport solar project. We are working on a recreational trails program grant application that will fund up to $50,000 towards this project, so some good seed money to get it moving. It's obviously going to cost more than $50,000 to get this whole thing reconstructed, but this $50,000 in grant money will certainly be a good start. So Director Maske and I and others are working on that application now. Park Street and Place Neighborhood Meeting, this is regarding the first church, will be happening on January 8th, 6:00 PM here in the City Hall Annex at 46 Front Street, encouraging all neighbors and those interested in the church's plans there to please attend this meeting. The goal of this meeting is, of course, to have an open dialogue and a good discussion, and hopefully forge some sort of compromise to bring back to the council for consideration so we can solve this issue. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago also, we're looking for a generator for this building, going back to an emergency shelter. To make this building an appropriate emergency shelter, obviously during power outages, which we just had for up to five days here, we need a generator. So we are approaching the county, who still has quite a bit of ARPA money. We are asking for $50,000 to buy a generator for this building so it can be an emergency shelter. We have a meeting at the Commissioners' Meeting this coming Tuesday, January 2nd, at 12:00 noon, and city staff will be there to support our application to the county commissioners to buy this generator. If anyone would like to provide some additional advocacy, we're urging you to please contact your county commissioner, our county commissioner, which is George Jobber, as well as the whole county commission, and urging them to approve our request for $50,000 to purchase a generator for this building. An update on winter sand and salt. I've been discussing with Director Skian moving to a salt priority program, which will reduce the amount of sand we're dumping on our roadways in the winter. As you've all probably noticed, by March, our roads are looking pretty brown, pretty dirty. All this sand is clogging catch basins. It's not generally good for the environment. It makes a mess on people's lawns. Many communities have moved in this direction quite a while ago in reducing the amount of sand they're dumping on the roads and moving more to salt. There are some potential budgetary impacts on this, but it will save a whole lot of time sweeping in the spring. We have street sweepers out until July at this point, cleaning up winter sands, so until July, just a few months before it goes back down. So we're really interested in doing this. It's going to make the roads look a lot cleaner. It's going to make the city look a lot better, and it's going to save some of the sand being dumped into our roadways and our environment.
Counselor.
May I ask a question around that? I support this change in general. However, there is, in environmental literature, there is a documented impact on the, a range of biology in streams and wetlands that receive high-salt effluent. Is there any consideration of that particular impact in a more strategic implementation? So for example, you know, trying to limit the amount of salt that goes into the Mesolonski or the Arboretum Stream or any of the other smaller tributaries?
We can definitely talk more about this. I think this is just an idea in its infancy right now, going this direction. We haven't hammered out all the details. As we get into it, I think this is a good conversation to have. But I'll point out, you know, many, many communities, I think many communities that really prioritize their environment also have already done this, you know, a long time ago. Communities throughout New England, Massachusetts, Southern Maine, Portland, larger cities, they've been doing this. So I'm sure there are ways to be environmentally conscious in how we're, you know, applying the salt. And so I think as we dig into the details, let's have more conversations on this to make sure we're being obviously respectful of our environment and how much salt we're dumping into it also. Good, great. Moving on, Corry Road, you probably saw the press release that went out. Congrats to Corry Road and the Friends of Corry Road for securing a grant of $712,000 for trail improvements from the Northern Border Regional Commission and USDA Rural Development. Another significant win for this venue. It's going to be some great funding to continue to build out the trail network there and continue to make this a real destination for Nordic skiing, which it already is and continues to grow. So congrats to them, and things are looking good for the future there. Some staff updates. First, I want to welcome Philip Squires as our new IT technologist. Phil started with us just last week. Really bright, really promising future. We're happy to have him on board. Our IT department also definitely needed some help with the amount of work they handle and the staff that was currently present. This position was, I'd say, desperately needed. So they're very happy to have him on board, and I think we're off to a good start there. So welcome, Phil. The second one I want to announce is Community Resource Officer and a PD Officer, Bule, if I'm pronouncing that right, is our new Community Resource Officer. He's been with the city for 18 years, coordinated Operation Hope, and handled the most recent issues in the downtown with great success. So we're excited to have him in that role and a lot to come there. So welcome to him in his new role also. Lastly, I just want to mention my next city manager's open office hours will be January 22nd. We're going to do 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Location is still pending. I'll have that out in the next week or so. And if you do have any recommendations for future locations, I am trying to rotate these around the city to make sure we get around as well as rotate the times so everyone has an opportunity to come and chat. Thank you.
Counselor comments and committee reports.
I have a report from the Housing Committee. We met on December 13th with the city's new community development specialist, Michael Hall, and it was a great meeting. We heard about some of the work he's done in Augusta, as well as his ideas for moving forward with two projects that the Housing Committee has discussed for quite some time, creating a Waterville Land Bank Authority and also a revolving loan fund that would stimulate residential property improvements. The committee decided we really want to focus on exploring these projects over the next four months. Currently, the committee is scheduled to sunset April 24. Meanwhile, the committee noted ongoing concerns with the following issues: low level of homeownership compared to other communities, a high number of vacant properties and dangerous buildings in Waterville, the ongoing need for all types of housing, in particular, housing for vulnerable populations, including supportive and recovery housing, and the need for updated housing data, which keeps coming up, particularly in relation to the changing demographics and projected growth of Waterville. The city has reported that rental registrations now stand at approximately 50% of known rental properties. This is as a result of the rental registration ordinance that was enacted last March. While this number doesn't meet the projected goal of 90% registration, it is still a significant accomplishment for a voluntary program. And other communities that have mandated programs have spent a lot more resources and time with marginally better results. I mean, talking 70%, which is still a sizable difference. So the Housing Committee is, first of all, commending the property owners who registered their rental properties as requested, and also recommending that the council extend the enrollment period for another six months to assess whether a mandatory ordinance is necessary. And on that note, we really want to encourage property owners who have yet to register to cooperate with the city's goals and, and the goals to increase public safety, safe housing conditions, and to gather updated and accurate housing data. Happy to answer any questions if you have some.
Has there been discussion on the committee about using some sort of incentive structure rather than a punitive structure to drive enrollment?
Well, we have no punitive structure at all because it's voluntary.
No, I understand that. I understand that. I understand there's none. It's all voluntary now.
Right.
But, you know, moving forward, trying to figure out how to get to that 70, 80, 90% that you, that. Has there been brainstorming around using incentives rather than punitive structures?
Well, the incentives would, are really going to come out of the Land Bank Authority and the revolving loan fund projects, you know. So yes, we have, we have discussed that, but that's, you know, part of a larger discussion, and the details of that have yet to be worked out. I think, you know, I want to emphasize that the goal, one of the wins of this whole rental registration ordinance has been improving the relationship between the city and rental property owners. So I think we felt very good about that. It would be great, and many of them have seen the value in making sure that, you know, the fire, public safety has their, has their information in case of emergencies. And also, an interest among the rental, you know, at the Central Maine Apartment Owners Association has expressed interest in the data that results as well. So there are certainly, you know, it might, it might seem like a burden to have to fill out a form, but it really is going to help in the long run with not only, well, providing more housing in Waterville, which will also ultimately help solve some of the other problems we have, like our housing situation, our homeless situation. So I hope, I hope that people see the big picture in this. Rental property owners, please fill out your registrations, and we can work on those incentives and start getting properties updated and, and back online in Waterville.
Anyone else? Moving on to public comments.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Clepack?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
A vote of six in favor and zero opposed?
Old business?
Move to root by total only. Second.
Order 196-2023.
Can we take a vote on that? I'm sorry. Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Clepack?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
A vote of six in favor and zero opposed? Order 196-2023, accept the grant from Efficiency Main Trust.
Move to adopt. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Patty.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Clepack?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
A vote of six in favor and zero opposed?
Moving on to ordinance 199-2023.
Amend the Board's Committees and Commissions Ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
So I just wanted to note, this, this one went by pretty quickly in the first vote. There's quite a lot of updating in this, in this resolution. It also includes a couple of committees that are sunsetting. So before we, before the sun goes down on these, I just want to recommend that, so that the four, four sunsetting committees are Transportation, Recreation, the TIF Committee, and the ARPA Committee. I would like to recommend that we explore a new committee charge for Recreation in Waterville to coordinate some of the projects we have going on and the potential that we have for recreation, including developments ahead of all. So I just want to note that. I'm fine with, with sunsetting the current committee as it stands. But I also would like to suggest that the ARPA Committee be extended by a period of time to allow the council and the committee to come together and sort of finalize any thoughts going forward on ARPA funds. Because I think there are a number of, I think it would benefit the council from hearing what their insights are over the past few years. They recently heard a request for ARPA funds, so I feel like there's some business that still needs to be wrapped up there. And, and we have, we have funds that are yet to be spent. So I would suggest that we extend this committee by a month or two just to give us a chance to have this discussion with the committee in council before the committee sunsets. So my motion is to extend the sunset date of the ARPA Committee by, let's say, one month.
I'll second the motion.
Can I get a roll call on that motion?
Should we have some discussion?
I just think this is one of the problems with having put the sunset into our ordinance is having committees disappear without there being much thought given to them. I have no objection to extending the ARPA Committee. I just think that's one of those things that we recommend that the next council take a look at the way their, the way the committees are operating and see if they can straighten out some things.
Just a clarifying question. Are you suggesting that committees shouldn't have sunset, fix sunset dates?
Well, for instance, the TIF Committee, the TIF program, any particular TIF run could run up to 30 years. So sunsetting the TIF Committee is, I think, just foolish. And it's, I think, the same thing with some of the other committees. Just because the committee doesn't do anything doesn't mean it's not an important committee. It just means that there hasn't been anybody to take the ball and run with in the committee. So I, it was just one of those things where, where council is learning how to work with committees. So it's just one of the things you need to think about.
Well, I, oh, go ahead.
To Counselor Frankie's point, any particular committee is only required to report once in a calendar year. Is that correct?
I think it varies depending on the committee, the way that it's written. But certainly, if there's been no activity in a year for a committee, one wonders if, if that, if that committee is still important to, to be active. Just to Counselor Frankie's point, I would also say this is why we're having a vote on these committees. I mean, if we want to extend the term, we certainly can. But that's why I also wanted to just, you know, say, hey, do we want to, we're going to, these committees are going to sunset, so let's make sure that that's what we want.
Roll call, Patty.
This is on the amendment.
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Correct. This is on the amendment to extend the ARPA Committee for one month. Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Clepack?
Yeah.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
A vote of six in favor and zero opposed?
Move as amended.
Well, point, we, the Recreation Committee was not on the original correct, so we need to make an amendment to add the Recreation Committee to this particular vote.
To sunset?
Sunset it, yeah. You know, I had a conversation with, with Matt about the current charge of the committee, and I spoke with the other two councillors on the committee and to bring them up to speed. And at this point with, you know, like Counselor Green's comments before, we have a lot of things that are coming down the pipe that at this point, the committee, as it's written, might not be the best way to, to kind of navigate those conversations. So first of the year, we're going to, we're going to pull up, you know, myself, Counselor Green, Brian, and Matt to discuss, you know, the best way to move forward. So we thought, since we were sunsetting committees at this point, it was a good opportunity to sunset this one and then re-invite it, you know, bring it back at another time as needed in a different form, so.
So that sounds like a motion. Was there a second to that?
Second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry. So the motion was to bring back the committee?
To sunset?
Sunset the committee.
Sunset this, yeah. Well, it is already scheduled to be sunsetted, isn't it?
I don't believe.
It's part of, it's.
Get in the language there.
It's part of the four committees that are set to sunset this month.
But I believe rec was not included on the.
It wasn't.
On the document that we originally considered.
Oh, really? Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay.
So we're adding it?
Right. Committee to sunset.
Got it.
Clepack, seconded. Can I get a roll call?
Count.
Unless there's any discussion.
No.
Okay, so this motion is to sunset the rec committee. Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Clepack?
To be clear, the motion is to add.
Add.
The rec committee to be, to the vote that will eventually sunset it. This vote is not.
Sunset, correct.
So yes.
Okay.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed?
Now move as amended, somebody?
Move as amended.
Second.
Now final roll call, unless there's any more discussion. Seeing none, I'll take a roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Clepack?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed?
Moving on to new business, Resolution 201-2023.
Authorize the issuance of a short-term rental license to Barbara Carey.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just.
Do we, do we have somebody here to explain what this is all about?
Yes, I am Barbara Carey.
That works out well.
Want to tell us about it?
We purchased a home that had been vacant. Lady had it since 1952, right on Sterling Street in Waterville, and we have rehabbed it. We keep it basically for family, since all of our family is out of state. And we're looking into short-term rental because then we can control when the house is available.
So you use the house, your family uses when they come to visit, is that?
Yes, yes.
And you want to take advantage of the time when there's no family to occupy the space, is that?
That is correct. If I had a full-time renter, I wouldn't be able to do that. And our house is not as large as our family. And it's kind of nice that they're across the street from us sometimes.
We'd like, we're going to send our kids to you, just, we're going to write that out.
When my son and daughter-in-law come to visit, that's where they stay.
Well, thank you for coming and asking, counsel, to approve your request. There are a lot of houses out there that are not complying with our ordinance, and I appreciate the fact that you've stepped forward. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Clepack?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
A vote of six in favor and zero opposed? Counselor Green? You have things under your.
Yes, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
No. One moment. Denied.
Jay's not getting away that easily.
I'm trying, I'm trying. I was going to try to get away easy. I want to take a couple moments and just say thank you. First, to my family, because they've had to deal with me over the last few years, working with the city. I want to thank all of the councillors, every single one of you. Rebecca, it's been fun, our Tuesday meetings. Rebecca's been good at trying to ground me. I have pushed the envelope as far as I could. Sometimes I got my hand slapped, but for the most part, it went by. It was never malicious. But we definitely pushed some boundaries. We did a lot of good work. We have changed the police department. We have changed the. We have changed the fire department. We have community policing. We have more communication with our schools. We have changed the structure of the way that we do things. We have changed the back and forth. There wasn't a lot of fighting with this council as in years previous. We have spent a lot of time collaborating, and I'm thankful that you guys made the job look easy. It wasn't. It was a lot. Brian coming on board has been fantastic. It's made it easier for me to sort of step back and not hound people. I know I've given you a few grays. You got lucky last few months because, I don't know if you knew this or not, but when Bill Post came to us, he had a full head of hair. So just so we're clear. I want to thank all the department heads, the ones I hounded, Sean, Chief Bonney, every time, always answered the phone, always answered emails, Patty, the drop-ins to the office, unannounced visits, just to talk. Thank you for listening. And that's it. That's all I got. I am ready for the next chapter.
Thank you.
Now you can adjourn.
So not quite yet. Because, you know, counsel gets the last word, right?
Yep, always.
So our mayor-elect has a few words to say.
So, yeah, we wanted to make sure that we recognize, I mean, as we end 2023, you know, 2024 will look a little bit different, you know. So they asked if, you know, if I would say a few things about Jay, and I said, no, and they said, please, and I said, okay, fine, I will. And I said, well, you know, shit, what can I say about Jay that he hasn't said about himself already?
Yep.
Like, so we'll figure this out. But I did want to just take, you know, a moment just to really express, you know, my heartfelt appreciation for the dedication that you had as our mayor and as, you know, as a city council member, being able to sit here and kind of witness firsthand the impact that you've made on the community has been fantastic. Your commitment to the betterment of our city has been truly remarkable. I think that you have entirely addressed the needs and concerns of our residents, you know, striving to create a more inclusive and prosperous city, you know, for us all. Your innovative ideas and initiatives, as we'll call them, you know, have sparked important conversations that have, you know, brought out a lot of positive change, you know. And I think from... I remember from day one when, you know, you took over, or not really day one, but when we sat in the Finance Committee meeting, talking with the schools, and really setting the tone for, you know, your advocacy for, you know, working to make sure that the schools were funded appropriately and what we could do on the city side and reopening those... Rebuilding those bridges, so to speak. Having seen that come to, you know, fruition, and not only that, but with the city employees and the unions and advocating, you know, for them, which, you know, again, has resulted in a rise in more morale, you know, and it's equipped our department heads, you know, with the necessary tools to, you know, recruit in what is still a very competitive job market. So, you know, on behalf of, you know, the entire community in the city council, I want to thank you for your outstanding service, and it's going to be an honor to follow in your footsteps as the incoming mayor, and I'm eager to continue to build upon the foundation that you've laid at this point. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add my two cents and say that when I started on council three years ago, we were on Zoom, and it was the middle of COVID, and, you know, you took us through a very vulnerable period in the city's history. And, yeah, and we did get a lot accomplished. The council will be quite different next time, not only with Jay's absence, but also Counsel Frankie's, who is... This is his last meeting. So I also want to say a few words about Counsel Frankie's contribution, which has been notable on many levels. Counsel Frankie probably holds the record of most committees. He has served on the Solar Committee, both Municipal Finance and School Finance Committees, the Historic Preservation Committee, and the Community Resilience Committee, which he was instrumental in starting. And it's... I don't think there's anyone who's a harder-working member of council than he is. We're going to miss you, Claude, not only for your attention to process and being a stickler for detail, but also I really appreciate the way that you paid attention, and I think that's really valuable. And I really appreciate that about you. I also want to mention your service on union negotiations, which was really invaluable at a critical moment, so. You know, the council members don't always agree with each other, but I think Claude stands out in that I think he actually enjoyed being able to disagree with everyone at one point in time. And so we will miss your curmudgeonly...
Sense of humor.
Sense of humor and your unique way of taking us to task. And just want to really thank you for your service and hope you'll stick around on some of those committees, too.
I think you must have missed a couple committees there, too.
I probably did.
He's on TIF.
Thank you. And I just, as my last two cents, want to say that the Democratic Party chose not to run me for reelection this time, and I did not challenge that. And that is the way that a peaceful transition of power takes place. That's... There are many in the country right now who don't believe in the peaceful transition of power. Along the same lines, I want to say that elections here in Waterville run smoother than they do in many parts of the country. And I want to applaud, once again, the clerk and her staff, who really make this a beacon of democracy. And finally, I'll just note that I still live three blocks from council chambers, so you may see my curmudgeonly face from time to time, no matter what, although not if it snows or rains a foot and a half of water.
Well, when you visit us, we hope that you'll enjoy wearing this... Nope, okay. ...token of appreciation that recognizes your participation.
I'm going to burn frozen, pal?
Done.
I got other things to do.
Thanks, Jay.
I'm going to have a lot more free time. Hey, are we doing this? When's this happening? Listen.
So is this the sixth day of Christmas or the seventh? What...
We're moving to adjourn, somebody? Last one?
So moved.